Calling to order the Monday, November 19th, 2018, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Hannon.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Here.
Our first order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve with the change that we move item number three on the consent agenda between items number four and five on the regular agenda.
Support? Motion made by Councilmember Hannon with support. Councilmember Gavin. Any additions or corrections with the motion as amended? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Our agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Pastor Adam Gro.
Let's pray. God, we have so much to be thankful for in this season. We thank you for the city that we live in. We thank you for all the passion that this city has. And even though we have a tendency to disagree on some things sometimes, we thank you for the freedoms that we have in this, in this country. So remind us of those tonight. Be with this council. Give them the sermon. Give them wisdom as they lead it. Give compassion and understanding to all who talk tonight. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's turn the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty
All right, it is now time for citizens' comments where you may present your thoughts and issues or on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the clerk's table. Remember, you may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Rachel Pisantini, Berkeley. This is not going to stay up. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about the crosswalks. I don't know if some of you have heard, but there was a serious accident involving two of our high schoolers a few weeks ago. And unfortunately, this accident has affected two of those young lives. So my concern, let me explain what happened for those of you who don't know. The crosswalk, which was by Camelot Cleaners, there was a car that was stopped in the right lane. It was lunchtime at the high school, and there was, I believe, three girls that were at the crosswalk crossing. There was a car stopped in the right lane. The girls proceeded to walk in front of that car. There was a car in the left-hand lane that couldn't see the girls because, first of all, the person driving was an inexperienced driver. He's a young Berkeley High School student who just got his license. And just so you guys know, they don't teach about those crosswalks in driver's ed. I know, my son just took driver's ed. In fact, my son said to me, "What do you call those crosswalks in the middle of the street or in the middle of the, not at the corner?" Do they have a name? Anyway, back to my story. So the driver in the left-hand lane didn't see the girls that were crossing in front of that stopped car. One of the girls proceeded to continue crossing the street while the other girls stopped because they saw him coming. He hit that young girl, and he broke her femur. Now, unfortunately for the driver, he's probably going to lose his license. He just got it. That young girl has now at least six months of recovery to go through. I need you guys to address these crosswalks. And actually, to be honest with you, I didn't even know that there was a blinking light by the crosswalk, which is essentially over the sidewalk, until my husband told me. And I'm an experienced driver. So you either need to remove them, or you need to put the flashing light in the sight of the drivers, which is right in front of them. The drivers aren't looking over to the sidewalk to see a little flashing light. So I'm asking you and begging you, before somebody gets killed, to please address this. The second thing I want to talk about is I got a report last week from Patengill. There are special needs kids that walk, I don't know if it's certain days of the week, but this particular day of the week, they go to bowl. And they take Oakshire to Hartfield. And the special needs kids could not walk along the sidewalk. Why? Because we have a new build that's blocking the sidewalk. And one of those kids was in a wheelchair that had to be pushed into the street and through piles of leaves. So I thought we were past this. So once again, can we please get the builders to keep the sidewalks open? Thank you.
I'm Jessica Algar. I live in Berkeley. I am here representing the supporters of the Berkeley Community Center Bond to read a letter that we are passing to City Council. As you know, the Community Center Bond was unfortunately defeated by 148 votes. Despite this narrow defeat, the need for a new community center remains. The existing building is inadequate for the needs of Berkeley, and this is only exacerbated by the loss of the ICE Arena this year. The existing facilities are in need of major structural repairs, and the small size and layout of the building impose unacceptable limits on the city's ability to expand needed community and recreational programs. Because of this, the supporters of the Berkeley Community Center Bond are urging City Council to continue to pursue options for a new community center and place the proposal back on the ballot as soon as possible. We believe the narrow loss of this measure indicates that the city can find ways to modify, add value to, and further educate residents on the proposal so it will appeal to the majority of our fellow residents. The supporters of the Berkeley Community Center Bond are looking for ways to ensure both sides are heard, and we are working to get, we believe working together will give us a better plan, one that citizens can agree is the right plan for Berkeley. We encourage city leadership to immediately begin working with the community to accomplish these steps so we have a successful measure to vote on. There are many, there were many robust conversations regarding the bond proposal, but we think it is fair to say, all could agree that the state of the current dilapidated community center is simply unbecoming to our prosperous city. Something must be done, and we ask for a proposal as soon as possible to ensure our taxpayer dollars are not wasted on trying to maintain a building that has passed its useful lifespan. It is time to move forward to a brighter and more active future where we can take pride in our community amenities. Thank you. Signed, the supporters of the Berkeley Community Center Bond.
Good evening. Hi, Wendy Zabramski, Berkeley. I have a comment about the agenda in general. I was very disappointed to see the item on the consent agenda that seriously should not have been. I feel that it might have been an attempt to slip something through the residents because you just vote on that, and all it is is said. And I think by the looks of things, it's a very serious matter. And even in your own bylaws, it says the consent agenda is for routine or reoccurring nature. And I don't think this fits that. And I really would like to know why it was slipped through, and I would like to see it not happen again. Thank you.
Good evening. Kurt Hight, Berkeley. You know, I talked to several of you before the election, and I, I think a few of you were in agreement that if somehow it didn't pass, that you would pursue doing something with a community center. And I hope that we go back to a discussion that I had with, with many of you, well, some of you guys weren't on the council back then, but in 2016, where I felt that, you know, it was very important that we stayed away from the issues of 2009 and not go for a, like, a $15 million community center. And I think, you know, the price is too high. So hopefully, when we, when we move forward, if you guys decide like to do some kind of a citizens advisory committee or something, hopefully you, you do a little bit different pool, like get, get people from both sides that'll kind of at least work together and, you know, so you have somebody that's willing to say, "Ah, that doesn't really sound like a good idea," rather than, "Yes, let's just keep adding on to it, make it bigger, add more value that way," rather than saying, you know, "What can we get more bang for, for less buck?" You know? That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing nobody else coming up to the microphone, we will close citizens' comments, and we will move on to our order of business. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, October 22nd, 2018, and warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1332.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem. With support, Councilmember Blanchard. Any discussion on the consent agenda items tonight? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on our consent agenda?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda, we will move on to agenda item number two.
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the community development block grant program year 2019 application and the approximate amount of $33,419 to fund eligible projects.
Is there a motion to hold the public hearing? So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin. Support from Mayor Pro Tem Baker. With that, I will now open the public hearing at 7:12 and 30 seconds.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kai Campbell Fox, and I'm here representing Haven, which is located at 801 Vanguard in Pontiac. So first of all, thank you for your support last year. Last year, you gave part of your CDBG money to Haven. So thank you very much for that. It really helps us to serve the members of your community. In case you were wondering, last year, we served 20 members of the Berkeley community at Haven. That included three in our counseling program, eight that we assisted with personal protection orders, eight we assisted with court advocacy, and one that we did forensic exam for. That doesn't even include, like, our crisis line calls and so forth. We ask that you continue that support again this year with your CDBG funds. So again, thank you. If you have any questions about any of the programs or any of the information in the pamphlet or the fact sheet, I would be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or?
No. But thank you. Any other comments? Our public hearing is closed. Once, twice. Okay. Seeing no additional comments, we will close the public hearing at 7:14 and 25 seconds. We will now move on. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R3418, matter of adopting the community development block grant program application for the 2019 to 2020 fiscal year.
Is there a motion to approve R3418?
Motion to approve.
Support. motion approved by Councilmember Stedman with support. Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annual item. We receive monies through the CDBG program, which was, which is a federally administered program, but we actually work with several other communities in a consortium through Oakland County. So Oakland County is our direct oversight on this. This year, we are happy to receive $33,419 to be broken up into specific categories. One is the removal of architectural barriers. We are able to expend $23,394 on that item. We have three items that are considered to be public services. We have yardway services for seniors who qualify. We have services for disabled, the disabled individuals. We purchase large print library books with those monies. We traditionally have done. And the last one is the support for Haven at the price of $3,500. So again, we're happy to participate. We would be, we certainly receive far less if not for the, you know, our partnership with other communities as well as Oakland County. And we look forward to putting this to very good work throughout the community.
Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Hannon?
Yeah. Removal of architectural barriers, that's typically the, adding the ADA compliant sidewalk ramps.
Yes. Because of, there's a very specific uses that we have under this. It's a very tightly administered program. So we typically utilize this program in order to make a dent. So this won't be all of them, obviously, but we're able to put this work to good use.
Right. And this is something we do year after year. So over a while, we'll make it done in it. And I just want to make sure we're avoiding replacing those ramps in areas where we might be using the infrastructure millage or, you know, similar road repairs in the future.
Yeah, you're correct. So we do try to avoid intersections and areas where they have very low pacer ratings so that we know that those are subject to be redone. Last thing we like to do is put these in, then come back and tear them out a couple of years later.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you. These are 2019 CDBG funds. Have we used up, I know sometimes we carry them over. Have we used up all of our 18?
We have not. We do have some bank dollars from years previous.
Okay.
We are looking at maybe bringing to council consideration of reprogramming some of those dollars to do more sidewalk work. We have some different projects planned, but they may not be feasible.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. And just to touch on the Haven point again, thank you for your representation. Your folks have represented this organization for many years here at these types of sessions, and we appreciate what you do. And I appreciate the sobering facts that you provided us with too in terms of the unfortunate need that we have, and we're so thankful that, that you and others are there to help those folks that have, have this desperate need here. So, so thanks. I certainly will be supporting this tonight as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Seeing no further comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R3418?
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Ms. Boucher, would you please call the next item on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M8218, matter of authorizing a five-year extension of the Metro Act permit with AT&amp;T until December 31st, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve M8218?
Motion to approve. Support.
Approved by Councilmember Hannon with support. Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I stated in the, the backup materials here, this is a previously approved permit that has been reviewed by our city attorney as well as our Department of Public Services, or, I'm sorry, Department of Public Works. They've reviewed it. They, they have no issues with the extension. City Attorney has been working more closely with this item.
Yes, this is, if I may, Mr. Mayor, this is just an extension. There's no proposed extensions or installations associated with it. It's part of the Metro Act process. They have a limited term permit, five years, and it's due to expire. So this is something that we've seen before, and if we stick around long enough, we'll see multiple more times. So you have the discretion to approve, but the reality is under the statute, you have no discretion. Unless we want to go back to speaking of tin cans with strings attaching to them.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah. If you could just, for those of us that haven't had the opportunity to review this in more detail, could you just briefly explain what right-of-way means and what it is we're, we're talking about so we don't need to use those tin cans? The string doesn't work so well when it rains and stuff like that, so.
Right. Well, we all know the AT&amp;T. I'll call them the phone company. They've been around since, yeah, just the turn of this century, but the turn of the previous century. The rights-of-way in the city are controlled by the, we're talking about the roads and the, and the shoulders are controlled by the city and the state and, of course, the county road commission. We have a statute in Michigan called the, I'm just going to call it the Metro Act because I kind of forget what all the, what all the letters stand for. Everybody just refers to it as the Metro Act, but it is a statute that applies throughout the state. It is a means by which telecommunications companies who want to locate their, their fiber optics, their wires, their poles within the public rights-of-way, which, of course, is where they usually are located, they need to come to the municipality to get a permit. When I kind of jokingly said before that we have discretion, but limited discretion, that's because the statute makes it clear that once these are established, the statute dictates what we can charge, how soon we have to do it, and what they are permitted to do. And in this case, as I mentioned, AT&amp;T have been around for over a century. They aren't proposing any new equipment or utilities, but they do have a five-year permit. So every, every five years, we have to go through this renewal process, and that's what we're here for tonight. So I guess you can view it more as a, as a housekeeping thing than a substantive thing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. AT&amp;T is the only one of our cable providers that does not have a public access channel. Is there any way that we can, any leverage we have with this to get something like that?
Well, this has nothing to do with the cable part of it.
Franchise.
This is simply a phone. That's, that's another statute. That's the, the uniform local franchise thing, and, and that will eventually be coming up as well, and that would be the appropriate place and time.
Okay. We can't use this one to force that. Just throw it out there to see.
No. In fact, they would love to get a metro permit in order to, to be able to provide television, but that's not allowed under the statute.
No, but I will comment on that, even though we're not addressing that. AT&amp;T has been going up and down the blocks telling people that they do have that channel, which they do not. So just to be clear, that is not as something that we've been trying to get accomplished for years, and it has not yet happened. So if they are coming to your house door-to-door, just I would, I would ask that if they do. So again, we're here with Metro Act permit with AT&amp;T. As City Attorney said, we don't have a whole lot of option here. Anyway, are there any additional comments or questions as it relates to the Metro Act? No? Any out there? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M8218?
Hannon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
All right. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the next item on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M8118, matter of approving the terms of the reclassification assessment as discussed at the October 22nd, 2018 closed session.
Is there a motion to approve M8118?
Motion to approve. Support.
motion approved by Councilmember Hannon with support from Councilmember Gavin. Are we going right over here? Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is something that council has been advised on, which I presume is the reason why it was probably put on the consent agenda originally. The Internal Revenue Service conducted an audit or commenced an audit several months ago, as they have a tendency to do, and in particular, they were examining the various independent contractors, or I should say, the independent contractor relationship between the city and its, its various independent contractors. And in this particular case, they determined that several of those contractors who happen to be inspectors should be reclassified as, as employees. The significance of that is that more payroll taxes would be owed, and that's effectively and essentially what council is being asked to approve this evening, is that approval of that assessment, that special assessment, or actually, it's called a reclassification assessment for tax purposes by the IRS.
So this was an item that was discussed in closed session.
Correct.
Which is partially why it would have been on the consent agenda before. Not knowing what specifically should be talked about here, but I do have one question that I would like you to answer. In terms of the reclassification that has been assessed to us, are we, are we alone in, in communities that have acted in that manner for I don't know how many decades? Are there other communities that do it?
I think it's a fairly common practice, and in fact, this community for, really for many years, perhaps decades, has utilized independent contractors and primarily for inspection services. No, you aren't alone. Medium-sized and small communities really rely on the ability to utilize independent contractors for a variety of services, inspections being among them, simply because of the high cost of, of having employees. And in fact, the recent actions of council, it was either the last meeting or the meeting before that in approving the contract with McKenna Associates to bring them in to provide code enforcement, and inspection services is really a continuation or carryover of that. And as we already know, and one of the reasons you hired them is companies like McKenna Associates do, do provide that service for many communities in, in our area. We are just the, the latest to join their, their stable. So it is a fairly common thing. In this particular case, it's my understanding that the IRS provided fairly, I guess, rigorous determination or evaluation of the, the various tests that apply to these independent contractor situations, and in this particular case, decided that given the, the nature and the core, I think they referred to it as a core service, that these particular inspectors were, were providing that they should, for tax purposes, be reclassified as, as employees. And what that means to the city is that if they are classified as employees, there are more payroll taxes to be withheld. And that's the nature of this assessment, is if they're reclassified as employees, then there are payroll taxes owed for, for that year that they are reclassified.
Okay. Are there any additional questions from members of council? Councilmember Hannon?
What's the total amount of payroll tax that they're looking for?
The total amount, just rounding it a little bit, it's $18,400 and some change.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is the IRS examining other municipalities for the same practice?
I'm sure they are.
Okay.
They don't, they don't.
They don't tell you?
They don't tell us. Anyone who's dealt with the IRS knows how that works. No, they don't, they don't share that. But no, this is something that they do, they do routinely, and they do it throughout the country. It just so happens Berkeley was the lucky or, or unlucky It just so happens Berkeley was the lucky or unlucky number that, that popped up this time.
Thank you.
As you mentioned, our recent contract that we entered into with McKenna, which I believe officially started today, that is no longer something we need to worry about.
That's my understanding, yes.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Are there any other outstanding liabilities associated with this, besides the payroll taxes?
No. No, this would, this payment would, would settle matters, complete matters, there's no loose ends.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please?
Do you have a chance?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Jan, my name's Wendy Zabramsky, resident of Berkeley. I have a question.
Okay.
In light of them being employees, does that mean that they get back benefits? Does that mean they qualify for pensions? And if so, that is a little more than $18,000.
The answer to all those questions is no. This is simply limited to a reclassification for tax purposes, and as I answered before, that's the full extent of any liability that the city would have, is the $18,400 payment to the IRS.
Rachel Piesantini of Berkeley. So you had said that they commenced an audit several months ago, as the IRS tends to do. So there was no other reason? They just sort of knocked on your door and said, hello, let us let us in to do an audit?
We don't know the reason. They don't need to explain, and they don't.
Okay. Well, the IRS has laws against 1099s versus employees, as you mentioned. So you have to be very careful that you do not create an employee-employer relationship. And I think it would be very smart of the city to consider hiring an HR professional, because this would have eliminated your risk. And you need somebody who specializes in HR law, and when they need to, they'll call upon an attorney for additional advice, but it will also save you in attorney fees and things like that. So something you guys might want to consider.
This may have been mentioned already, but is this just for one year, or is it for, for several years?
I believe it's for one year.
Okay. Thank you.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. Were the person or persons who were under contract as independent contractors, were their contracts reviewed by the city attorney at the time the contracts were made?
Depends which city attorney you're referring to. Some of these contracts go back many years. They are things that Labor Council has been involved with. In fact, in this kind of response, the immediately preceding speaker, the city did not go into this blindly. These contractual relationships were things that were forged and approved by the city's Labor Council over the years, and also with respect to the IRS audit, there was good-natured dispute and negotiation. The city was represented by Labor Council. The city was also represented by the city's auditor and their attorney. So I don't know that having an HR person here would have necessarily changed anything, and I don't know that having a further legal review would have changed anything, because the belief was that these independent contractors were valid and enforceable, and they have been for many years, until this, this audit came along and the IRS came to a different determination.
Okay. If you don't want to believe that an HR person would have helped, I will throw out, a procurement person definitely would have helped. Having been a, still am a procurement professional, an executive, I've written thousands of these agreements and never had one come back, because every time, and when they were renewed or reviewed, every time, we sat down and went through the IRS guidelines to be sure that we were meeting them. Also, we made operational inroads with the people who were actually dealing with the contractors on a daily basis, to be sure that operationally, we were in compliance with the IRS regulations as well. It's, it's one thing to be good on paper, it's another to actually be operating within the guidelines on dealing with independent contractors.
You know, I just want to say one more thing. I am an HR professional, Mr. Sterren. And in 2016, I brought this concern to the city's attention. So please don't say or disregard people in the HR profession. They do know what they're talking about.
I didn't mean to. I just indicated that this was not something that the city had done blindly, but that the city was well counseled and advised.
Kurtite, Berkeley. I just had a question. You said that there would be no loose ends. Does that mean just for this year that the audit was for, or is there a chance that they could decide to audit for previous years?
No.
Knowing, okay, so it's done deal. They would not come back later on and say, oh, you know, we decided to audit you for 2018?
As I've said, this concludes all matters with the IRS.
Right, I just wanted to be clear, because we weren't only talking, we weren't sure what, we were talking about a year or two years.
I'm talking about all years.
So, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Can we move on? Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item on our agenda?
Ordinance number O-1418, Madam of Considering the First Reading of an Ordinance to Add New Article 14 Marijuana Establishments to Chapter 30 Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to Prohibit Marijuana Establishments as Defined in the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act and to Prescribe a Penalty for Violations.
Is there a motion to approve O-1418?
There's no proof. Really, I did say that.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean.
Support.
By Councilmember Henon? Okay, thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as he has reported on several times in the last several months, our city attorney has stayed on top of this evolving issue as it went to the voters. Now that we, now that the voters have spoken, the, the law that they passed does offer municipalities the option of opting out. In fact, it's one of the significant changes from the previous iteration, the medical marijuana law, where cities would have to opt in. Now all cities are in until they say otherwise. What's placed before you this evening is a recommendation from the city's attorney, as well as administration, to, to take that step and to opt out. And, and Mr. Attorney provided some information on that, and I'm, I'm sure he could expound upon it, but I just want to say off the top of that, that this is a recommendation, but it's, as you know, is absolutely open to the city council for discussion.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a good lead-in. Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. We're all, we're all aware that almost two weeks ago, Proposal One was adopted by the voters of Michigan, which legalized, subject to various limits, legalized the, the use and possession and even growing of, of medical, or not medical marijuana, but recreational marijuana. We already know that a few years back, first the voters approved medical use of marijuana, and then even more recently, we had the Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Act that was adopted by the legislature, which provided a statewide licensing scheme or, or program, rather than scheme, somewhat similar to what we have for the licensing of liquor establishments. What this new law that was voter-initiated does is take it to another level and is going to more or less apply a very similar state licensing program to recreational marijuana. The difference, though, this time, as, as the city manager pointed out, the difference between, one of the differences between this law and the medical marijuana law is, under the medical marijuana law, actual medical, the establishment of medical marijuana businesses, you were deemed, the city of Berkeley was deemed to have opted out of that unless we expressly adopted an ordinance to opt in and allow medical marijuana businesses. Okay? This law is, is, is approved by the voters, will, will, is set up, for some reason, to do the opposite, that we are deemed to be opted in unless we opt out. So I want to clarify, by passing this ordinance, if you decide to pass it this evening, what you're effectively doing is maintaining the status quo. We don't have marijuana businesses in the city now. This would continue it, at least until such time, at such future date, that the city may decide whether and to what extent and where you might allow marijuana businesses to locate. But for the time being, until, you know, until the ordinance would, would later be rescinded or, or amended, we would be prohibiting marijuana businesses. I do want to just make one last clarification, though. The only thing that this ordinance would, would prohibit is the establishment of medical, excuse, I keep saying medical. I got to get, get used to just saying marijuana and dropping the medical. This would prohibit the, the establishment of marijuana businesses in the city, but what it does not do and will not do is affect any other parts of the voter-initiated law, and that is the legalization of, of personal use and possession and transfer and growth of small amounts of marijuana. That is still allowed. That's going to be, that's going to be the law in the state of Michigan, effective 10 days after the election results are certified, and Clerk Boucher might be able to help me with that, but we're probably within a couple of weeks of that, of that date. So within the next couple of weeks, that part of the law, which is the main part of the law, is going to go in, into effect and would be unaffected by anything this ordinance does. All this ordinance will do is, again, would prohibit the, the startup or establishment of marijuana businesses in the city of Berkeley. People could still go elsewhere to obtain their marijuana, if they're so inclined, they just wouldn't be able to, to buy it or, or grow it as a business in the city of Berkeley if this ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. To clarify, I guess maybe not clarify, a lot of what we heard at the municipal level was, you're, the cities are going to get just all kinds of money, just tons of money, if they, if they open up stores in the city that are, that are able to sell, and they're regulated by LARA and everything else. Do we have any idea how much money the city could?
Not, not yet. And I would think, as I, as I mentioned, what this, this ordinance does, it's a prohibition, so it maintains the status quo. It's something that in the future, the city council can revisit, but this gives you the time, rather than being rushed to do something within the next couple of weeks before it goes into effect, this gives you the time to very thoughtfully and openly appropriate, and appropriately evaluate these things and to try to get answers to questions like that. At this point, all we know is that, under this law, marijuana establishments will be required on, on, on top of sales tax and everything else, they will be required to pay into the state a 10% excise tax, and the state will put that all into a fund, sort of like what they do at the Metro Act that, you know, we were talking about earlier.
State shared revenue.
They, they put it all into a fund, and then it, that fund will be used for different things, but one of the things that it will be used for is 15% of that marijuana fund will go back to the municipalities, but only those municipalities that allow the marijuana, the marijuana businesses, and it'll be allocated, I'm just reading right from the statute, it'll be allocated in proportion to the number of marijuana retail stores and marijuana micro-businesses within the municipality. So basically, to answer your question more directly, as to how much money would the city be looking at, we don't know, because until such time as we know how much that fund, that state fund is going to accumulate, and how many marijuana businesses and micro businesses around the state will be sharing that, that pie, we don't know for sure. I think the best we could do is maybe look at some examples from, you know, try to do a compare and contrast with some other states. I think, as of last Tuesday, I think we became the 10th or 11th state to, Michigan became the 10th or 11th state to legalize recreational marijuana. So we do have some examples, although nobody's laws is, is identical, we, we do have some examples of other states where we could look, and surely people, planners and others will be looking at that to see exactly what type of revenue flow has been generated, what type of tax revenue has been generated in those other states, and can we make projections in Michigan based on that data from others? But at this point, all we know is we would get, municipalities as a whole would get 15% of the 10% excise tax that the state collects.
Based on how many businesses you have.
Based on how many businesses, but what that translates to in actual dollars, your guess is as good as mine at this point.
So we have, council was actually given a report from the MML prior to the meeting today, with a couple of places where the money would go. First, first priority is to make LARA, the, the cost of administering and implementing the regulation, licensing and regulatory affairs, to make that a hole, so that's the first part of where this money's going to go to. After that, for at least two years, and about $20 million, they're going to fund clinical trials on the efficacy of marijuana, efficacy, sorry, of marijuana and treating the medical conditions of United States Armed Services veterans and preventing veteran suicide. And then after those have been fully funded, then we get into the 15%, then would go to cities that have establishments, proportionally based on how many establishments they have in the municipality. 15% to the county in which marijuana businesses are located, allocated again, in proportionally to the number of marijuana businesses in the county. 35% to the school aid fund for K-12 education, 35% to Michigan Transportation Fund to be used for the repair and maintenance of roads and bridges. So potentially, 15% of that whole pot will be split up to municipalities based on how many businesses they have in them. At least that's our reading.
After the first priority.
After the first priority of making the, of LARA whole and, and the $20 million for the clinical trials is satisfied, then we'll go on. All right, now that we have, I believe, most of the information, we can have a discussion. So what does council think? Councilmember Henon?
Of course, as mentioned on the revenue picture, we've seen a history at the state level of finding very creative ways to hold on to money that should be shared at the local level. So while I don't think it would be fair to say we would get no revenue, I would not expect it as a windfall, but time could tell. For me, I am opposed to the dispensaries in the city, and it simply comes down to, it is illegal on the federal level, and federal trumps whatever the state law is, and so regardless... regardless of anything else, I, I could not support, you know, anything that would encourage breaking federal law.
City manager, I forgot to ask, has public safety given any recommendation on this or any input?
Public safety's view of this as, in light of the fact that it's gonna take the state of Michigan about a year or so to even work through the licensing and regulatory process, they're, they're comfortable with council moving forward on this until such a time when the state establishes its law and regulatory framework, and then they would reevaluate at that point. So, I think first licenses aren't expected until probably spring of 2020.
2020, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Additional comments? Counselor member Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, the, you know, obviously, the voters spoke pretty clearly on this a couple of weeks ago, and while I certainly wouldn't presume to know exactly what motivates an individual's vote, particular vote, I would tend to think in this case that it was geared more towards the use, growth and possession, as opposed to any broader economic development or city planning ramification. So, at this time, I'm also inclined to opt out until the state issues their licensing requirements, since the proposal itself wasn't totally clear on marijuana establishment requirements, and so the state can offer the locals a little bit more of a guideline at this place, or at this point, a little bit of guidance, knowing full well that they can swiftly opt back in if that is the, the will, you know, down the road.
I would agree with council member Henan and Gavin, or council members Henan and Gavin, mainly because I just don't have enough information. I am a business person, I am all about growing new business and adding business to Berkeley, and any revenue that that would net us, but I think there's just too many, for me, there are too many questions still about how that potential revenue is gonna be dispersed and just too many unknowns. I have a lot of questions. But I would certainly entertain revisiting this later when we have more information. And to council member Gavin's point, the voters did vote to legalize, but does that mean they, again, is that a vote for business as well? I don't know. It's hard to infer that. So, I guess I would like to revisit it a later date. I do have a question, though, perhaps, on the federal level, since the federal government does not recognize this, and, and they're not saying that it's legal or allowed, are they going to be accepting tax revenues from this?
Probably yes, in terms of your last question. And the federal government is, has spoken very clearly. It is, it is clearly illegal under federal law. Marijuana remains on the controlled substances list. It is, it is illegal for all purposes, medical and otherwise. The U.S. Attorney Matthew Snyder, that covers our area, issued a, an announcement, I think about a week ago, maybe 10 days ago, that pretty much cautioned everybody that although the federal government does, this aren't his words, they're mine, does kind of pick and choose the, the enforcement cases that they'll go after, it is illegal, and no one should think that it is legal under, under federal law. Having said that, as I mentioned, Berkeley, excuse me, Michigan is not the first state, there are a number of other states that have gone before us, and even more have gone the medical marijuana route, not just the recreational. And if we can use recent history as an example, the federal government has had a tendency to not strictly enforce the marijuana laws in states that have basically legalized it from a state law standpoint. So, they'll still deal with it come, when it comes up, they'll go after the kingpins, they're still trying to control the, the spread and growth of illicit drugs in, in the city, but we won't, we won't, don't expect to see the federal government getting involved with people getting stopped or busted for use or possession of small amounts of marijuana. They're just not going to do it, they don't have the resources.
What about banks?
Oh, I almost, I almost left that question.
FDIC.
Well. Federal banks do not do business with marijuana bus, with, with, with anybody involved with controlled substances, and it's for the very reason we just talked about, because it's an illegal activity under federal law, and those banks could get into a lot of trouble with federal law. They could get involved with racketeering laws, other, other types of things that they do not want to be involved with. So, businesses will still, marijuana businesses still are required to pay taxes like everybody else, but suffice to say, it's still mostly a cash business, and they don't use banks the way.
Right.
Most businesses do. They handle their money in other ways, and that's one of the things that's going to be interesting about this and the excise tax and how that's all being accounted for and audited and so on. I, I really have no idea, because, because of that very reason we're talking about, is they don't, they don't utilize the banking industry very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Kind of building on that again, just to kind of reinforce that point, if it is a, basically a cash-only business in terms of not only receiving payment from, from their customers, but then also on how they go about paying their bills, their rent, their utilities, all that other kind of stuff, seems to me that there'd be a fair amount of cash involved, which in and of itself could pose a sizable opportunity for those who will seek cash through illicit ways themselves. It basically could be a robbery or a theft risk of its own right if we were to have such an institution.
Well, I'm not going to speak for Chief, Chief Kane, he can speak for himself, but I do know from everything that I have read or heard over the last few years that, that the Michigan police chiefs and really police chief organizations throughout the country and in those states that have already legalized, that have very much come out against having these businesses starting. And Councilman Baker, one of the things you were just talking about is one of the principal reasons, is they believe anywhere you've got large amounts of cash being transacted and kept in places outside of banks, that that is potentially a crime of opportunity for people of, of that nature.
Very so. Yes, in addition to the temptation of the product itself, I suppose, if you're in there for one thing, you might as well. What about on the, so the medical marijuana that you mentioned earlier, what is the, the new direction that the voters of the state have approved? What does that do for the medical marijuana?
Doesn't change it at all.
Still there?
That's still there, that's still fully in place, this supplements that.
Okay. So, if you, if you wanted to use it for medicinal purposes, you'd still need the card?
Correct.
If you want to use it for recreational purposes, you don't need a card?
That's right, although I suppose when you posed the question that way, yes, you don't need a card, so, so for the small amounts of marijuana that you could now legally utilize, use, consume, possess, really for any purposes, you wouldn't need, you wouldn't. So, so the, the point is with, with the new law, the medical marijuana card may become less important, but not completely done away with.
It might be a backstop if something were to change with this law or something like that.
Correct.
So, I did have an opportunity to speak with some of the folks from the DDA, alias to the Downtown Development Authority, and, and it wasn't really an interest in establishing a gateway district of sorts, if I could borrow a pun from Dr. Benton many, many years ago. So, the, the DDA likewise doesn't, doesn't really see this as part of their vision for the downtown of, of our community, and I for one would like to take a slow, steady approach to this and in support of this tonight. One of the questions that I'd like to hear more about is, what's the, I don't even know what the language is, and you hinted at it a second ago, what's the marijuana version of a breathalyzer, right? Because there's.
There isn't one.
That's, that's kind of where I was inquiring, right? Because if and when, ultimately, there would be some sort of threshold after which one would be considered to be incapable of operating, you know, certain, do certain functions and procedures.
That, that is going to be an enforcement issue, unlike the preliminary breath tests that all of our officers have with them when they're out on patrol, and if they can pull over someone they suspect of being intoxicated, and they can administer that and get an instant reading that would give them probable cause to proceed further with sobriety testing and that sort of thing. There is nothing like that for marijuana. The officers will basically be left to their, their training and their, their observations. I mean, there certainly is medical testing to determine the presence, you know, urine tests and other things to determine the presence of marijuana or other drugs, but those aren't instantaneous. Those are things that have to be sent out to the lab, and you get the results sometimes later. And even with that, one of the difficulties with the marijuana detection, which differs from alcohol, which alcohol tends to dissipate very quickly, and within a matter of hours it can be out of your system depending on the, on the quantities you've consumed, whereas with marijuana, there can be traces of it staying in your system for weeks. So, even with the medical testing, that does not necessarily give the officers the ability to conclude that on such and such a date at such and such a time, this person was under the influence of marijuana.
Sure.
So, it, it's a little bit like going back to the days that predate all of us here, but the days of, of how they dealt with drunk drivers before the preliminary breath test device was developed. They basically have to use good judgment and rely on their training and, and, and observations, and to then administer the various sobriety tests, the physical tests that also help them determine whether someone has all their faculties or do they appear to be intoxicated.
Yeah, yeah, cool, thanks. So, where I was kind of going with that is, if it is difficult for, for our officers to ascertain somebody's state, so to speak, we could pose the city to additional financial risk in terms of if we, A, either hold somebody back or detain or, or begin to pursue somebody that was under the limit, certainly they could seek to say, hey, you guys, you know, false whatever, or even worse, if we were to release somebody or let somebody continue on their way when they were in fact over the limit because of our, and if they were to get into some accidents or things. And then it was found out later that Berkeley let them go because we couldn't detect whether that. I think if any of those scenarios were to develop, that would certainly dwarf any small amount of tax revenue that, to my colleague's point, that we may someday see from the state based on the very diminished fraction from these numbers that were reviewed earlier. So, I mean, I think we'd be opening ourselves up to quite a considerable amount of financial risk in addition to the life and safety risk, which is paramount, if we were to, to go into this without having better detection in place. And my last question at the moment is, this is just the first reading. So, if we were to find either some additional information tonight or more personally to the next council meeting, we could certainly revisit this and perhaps take it a different direction, because again, the way this goes, we have our first reading tonight, and then there would be a second reading at a future date.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor member Stedman?
Excuse me. I'm going to oppose this, or vote for this tonight, too, until we have more information. I know from some of the MML workshops, shops that I've been at over the years, people are very confused out there. In fact, the state of Colorado has, you know, one group that says they're making a lot of money and another group that says they are not, that it's all, you know, lost in enforcement fees, or fines and so on. So, I will be supporting this tonight until we have a little more information on it.
Counselor member Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Tre, just a question. This ordinance that we've got to propose here is going to ban all, there's four or five different licenses for different businesses. There's a grower, there's a certifier, a procureur, a transporter and a retailer. Are we opting out of all of those?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's one of the things that in the future, when, when, when the council looks at this and when your planning commission looks at this, if you decide to revisit this blanket prohibition, you will be able to consider, you know, whether you want to allow these businesses at all, or perhaps you want to limit the numbers of them or even the types. For example, maybe you allow, you're willing to allow a grow operation but nothing else, or maybe you're, you're, you know, other communities are doing different things, either with numbers or, or the types of businesses that they're, they're going to have. So, you will have all of that, that, those full range of options, and it's something that it, again, you can't be expected to do at a meeting like this. It will involve getting more information, it will involve getting your planning people, your, your planning commission involved, just as they would on any type of, of land use or zoning issue, and considering not only the, the potential benefits from the share of excise tax, but also considering other things, the, the effect on our own resources, personnel and otherwise, the effect on, on what we want to be as a community and what kind of business development. Will it have a positive effect or a blighting effect on other businesses? I mean, these are, are all things you need, you need to look at, just like there are other legal businesses out there that you would or would not necessarily want at certain locations based on how it fits in with the land use patterns you're trying to establish and your sense of community and so on. So, these are, these are big ponderous questions.
If we opted to allow some of, or one of, or two of the five that you mentioned, is that still disqualify us from being eligible to receive any of this 15% excise?
Not at all, because I do not think, from the way I, from the way I read, from the way I read the statute, you are not, it's not an all or, it's not an all or nothing, that if you allow a marijuana establishment of any kind, then that will put you in the, I guess, make you eligible to be in the, the sharing pool, the sharing of this state fund.
Residents, anybody here?
Sir, if I may just, as a point to that, the, the percentage that a municipality receives is in proportion to the number of businesses, businesses within that municipality. So, if we had just one, we would have a very minimal percentage.
The more, the more you have, the more, the more you're gonna get.
Yeah, so it's not like we would get the, even though the 15% is very small, after all the other set-asides, we wouldn't get the full 15, we would get a small percentage of a small percentage of a small number. Thank you.
How's it going? Kurtite, Berkeley? You know, just to make every clear, you know, I'm not against medicinal marijuana and I, but you had mentioned, so it kind of made me curious on how that worked. You had mentioned something about that we did not draft an ordinance, so that mean we opted out of having caregivers or providers?
No, we, only, only the businesses. The, the part of the law that allows people to use and possess medical marijuana and to have a card and to have caregivers and to grow, grow their own plants, up to 12 plants, that's still all in place. What we did opt out of is from having any businesses, dispensaries, grow operations, storefronts basically in the city of Berkeley.
Oh, so like somebody could do it at home?
So, you can use it, yeah, you can use it, absolutely. That's all, that's always been legal.
Can they provide it to other people from their homes?
Only if, for medicinal purposes, only if they are a, a licensed caregiver and then they're allowed.
So, it is still allowed from the home, but just not a business storefront?
Correct.
Okay. I just, I was not, thank you.
Just building upon that, the state actually did not allow the, the locals to wade into caregiver licenses or.
That's right.
Home-based care facilities, they took that away from us completely.
Correct.
Additional comments?
I'm David Lupin Parish from Berkeley. I just think that this ordinance is kind of a knee-jerk reaction to something that, you know, a lot of people don't know about, and it's kind of new territory for everyone in Michigan. But I think that. But I think that it's kind of short-sighted to immediately opt out. I think the way that they wrote it was so that people, it would have to be considered in communities. Because I am a cardholder, a medical marijuana cardholder, and I have to go down to Detroit. I have to go south of Eight Mile to get my medicine. And that creates a hardship for me, having to go down there, go down to bad areas, you know, worry about, you know, what's going to happen down there. And the way that it was written before, you, communities had to decide to allow these, so nobody did, except for Detroit. So I think the reason that they wanted it to be this way is so that people had to consider it. I think that you should consider leaving it the way it is because, like it was brought up, you, the state has a year to create the regulatory framework for licensing businesses. So it's not like as soon as this thing opens up on, I heard December 6th, if it opens up on the 6th, it's not like the 7th we're going to have, you know, pot shots up and down the block. It's still going to take a while before they can even be licensed. And if the state doesn't do it within a year, then it's up to the municipalities to license each individual business. So you guys still have the choice, you know, we as a community still have the choice whether we want these businesses or not, but it's just going to make it harder in the future if we would like to, because it would take, you know, it would have to be repeal this ordinance. So I think it would be a good idea for the city to take its time and think about it before just automatically opting out. I saw in the news today Royal Oak already opted out, so other cities are going to do it quickly like that. If we do decide to repeal it and bring it back later, businesses are not going to think of Berkeley because we opted out. They're going to look at the communities that didn't opt out right away. So I think, you know, since there's not an immediate, immediate need for the city to get rid of it, since there are no businesses opening next week, why not take the time, have some discussions, maybe talk to some residents about it, find out how people feel and then make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Joshua Hunter, Berkeley resident. Mr. Mayor, I would ask that council reject this ordinance tonight. As 70% of Berkeley voters approved Proposition 1, according to the Oakland County website, and 60% approved the decriminalization to the city's charter four years ago, so I think banning marijuana establishments is completely contrary to the will of the residents. I haven't heard, I personally haven't heard from one resident who supported a state legalization measure, but also supports a ban in Berkeley. I mean, 70% of voters support is a strong mandate to respect the wishes of voters, so I think.
We're not banning that. I mean, we're not, we're not talking about banning what the voters said.
I understand, establishments. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah.
Thank you. So I think, I think this, this is a mandate to not rush to judgment and enact this ordinance. My main concern is for the Berkeley residents who rely on this for medicinal purposes, even though the medicinal use is legal, they basically have to live in the shadows and go, go to, you know, basically Detroit, bad areas, as the previous resident mentioned, and their treatment options could be limited. I think the passage of proposition helps, but it's going backwards to ban establishments in Berkeley. It's counterproductive, especially since it's only, it's been less than two weeks since the election. Immediately banning these establishments would be a disservice, disservice to the residents with the, with medical needs. I think the regulations voters approved on the proposition, along with the city's standard codes are sufficient for now and until the framework, licensing framework is established. So I think there's no weed, no need to wait longer to come up with additional regulations. I know some nearby cities were, as was mentioned, Royal Oak opted out by a four to three vote. They voted 69% in support. So I think it's really short-sighted to do that and I hope the council doesn't ignore voters, as Oakland, Royal Oak Commission did. I think a ban, even if it's intended to be temporary, will certainly discourage businesses from considering Berkeley in the future, especially if they have, they already established business in a city that has, that was not as short-sighted. Now, I think it's possible that there is no market for a marijuana establishment in Berkeley, but if there is, it'd be a great detriment to the community to immediately ban them, considering a large majority of residents voted to approve less than 10, or less than two weeks ago. Regarding the federal laws, I personally would argue that the federal government's operating outside of its constitutional roles, but that's, that's for another discussion, but I think that should be, that should be considered, considering so many other states have enacted medical marijuana in the proposal we see today. So, so Mr. Mayor, I would ask for you and council to please reject the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Hi, Patricia, I'm a resident of Berkeley. Just going off what the last person spoke just said, I would like to make a point, obviously, that just because people vote for Proposal 1 doesn't mean that they necessarily want the establishments in their city. Obviously correlation doesn't equal causation, so I think that, in my opinion, maybe it's just a little bit too soon to vote yes on having establishments in this city. A lot of people have just voiced negativities about what's happened in Colorado and maybe allowing other cities to allow the establishments first and just see how it goes over there. But I think it is not a valid argument to say just because voters passed Proposal 1 that every city wants the establishments in their city.
And surprisingly, I'm undecided. I very much supported the proposition when we voted for it. I happen to live on a, on a street that crosses Woodward and there happens to be a bar right on that street, so that concerns me. But the question I have is why do we have to act on this immediately if there won't be licenses until 2020? Why can't we just table this until we get, not act either way, until we get more information?
Mr. Turney, have a response to that?
Well, it's council's call. We don't know exactly when the licenses will be issued. Right now, it's speculative. It could be a year, it could be more, but the reality right now is that if the council does not adopt this ordinance prohibiting these, then what would regulate these businesses as they come in is our zoning ordinance. And right now, without this ordinance, a marijuana establishment could locate in any commercially zoned property in the city of Berkeley. It would be a, would be a lawful commercial business. It is not unusual for municipalities, when faced with a new proposed land use, to adopt an ordinance like this or a moratorium, to give yourselves the time, to give your planning commission the time to fully analyze and, and vet the situation and, and decide how you want to handle it, ranging anywhere from continuing a prohibition to just, you know, the wild, wild west. Let everybody, let everybody come and locate wherever they want.
That's what we did with medical.
So this is the ability for the council to maintain some control and not allow anyone to get or claim to have gotten a toe-hold or a foot in the door, whatever, whatever metaphor you want to use, before the city has had the opportunity to fully deal with this. Some of the comments were made, this is new, why the rush? That's exactly the reason why. This law is going into effect in a few days. It wasn't the law until a few days ago. We have a rather extensive process to go through if the city is going to allow these, to determine what kind, where, that sort of thing. It's not going to be done within two days, so that is the reason why. It's not a knee-jerk reaction, rather it's a proactive reaction, in my opinion.
Thank you. Gary?
The second part is, could this be done with a provision, like a sunset provision, where we would be required to look at it again, excuse me, in a six-month period or a year period or anything like that? And still, but back to the original point, it's fairly, you know, well believed that there will be at least several months.
Yes.
Until a dispenser gets licensed. I still don't see why we have to act today. In two or three months, there won't be anything and we'll probably know, have more information. So I, I guess the major question I have is can we do this with a provision that we would be required to look at it again in six months or a year or something like that?
That's, that's council's prerogative. As written, it doesn't do that.
We could do that anytime, right.
If you want, and you could do it anytime. It's unusual to write a sunset provision, but we have done it. I think we did it on the chicken ordinance and we could do it here if that was council's prerogative, but it's your call, I mean, that's your choice, but that's your call.
Are there any other comments before we move on?
Kevin Myers, Berkeley. Just a question, I mean, we keep talking about what was the will of the voters. Did we want it here? Do we not want the stores here? Can we have the voters vote on this too? We're going to have two elections before any of these, any of these permits are given out. Is, I mean, it couldn't be that hard to get on the ballot here, is it? It's a thought, just, you know, it's a big decision to make and we keep wondering, is it the city, you know, who's going to make it, so.
Thank you. Sure. Thanks, Kevin. Steve?
Thank you. To that exact point, I'll touch out a little bit more in my communications later on, but the community will be going on a broad discussion together about the vision for how we see Berkeley, our neighborhoods, our downtown, the commerce, all those types of things as part of the master plan process. And so that is meant to be a very engaging and robust conversation about the future of the city, the ways in which we see our future, and it affects all of the things we've talked about, zoning and the business districts and the ways we interact with the schools and the kind of projects we pursue. So it's not exactly an election, but it's absolutely designed to be very engaging and with significant amount of outreach to get this very input. And if through that process and through the DDA and through the chamber and through other avenues, if we see that there is a significant demand for, for having an establishment somewhere on Coolidge or on 12 Mile or something like that, right next to one of the other shops that we have, then certainly this, as the mayor mentioned, we can revisit this at any time and make any appropriate changes, given the guidelines that eventually will come out of the state. And once we have a better clarity from public safety, how it is, we can ensure that we can keep everybody else safe at the same time. Thank you.
All right. I am going to call for a vote in just a minute on this. Before I do, you know, our, part of our role as elected officials in the city is to make sure that we're acting in the city's best interest from protection, liability, all of the various standpoints that are in front of us. I am not comfortable just saying, let's see what happens at this point. We have to take action either way. I'm not going to just, personally, and again, there's plenty of other votes, they could decide to do that, but I'm not going to do that. As it relates to this particular ordinance that, you know, when the medical marijuana vote happened and that came down, the cities were left to try to figure out how to regulate, how to monitor, how to do everything. And it was a very cumbersome process and we ultimately decided on the moratorium, which you mentioned earlier, because we didn't, we didn't know, we didn't have enough information. And that's the same situation that we're in right now. Now, personally, it's, what I want initially or what I want or don't want doesn't necessarily matter in terms of the overall, what the residents want, but for this particular, we've had to work with the state on a number of things. And when they're not clear to us and when they're not spelled out and we just have to react and figure out how they're going to work, I can tell you all that it's very, very difficult to administer and to regulate. And that is my concern right now with this. If we had a very clear set of standards and there was a number of licenses and here is how we can operate it, and this is how much money is going to come back to you if you do X, Y and Z, then we can have a much more robust conversation about whether or not residents do want, in fact, want this in the city. And like you said, or like everybody said, we've got a couple of years to figure this out. And as far as the, you know, if we don't do it now or opt in, they're not going to find Berkeley attractive. Well, I appreciate David and Josh, your thoughts on that. I am not persuaded that if we opened up that people would say, no, they said no the first time, we're not going to go there. I really don't think that would be the case. I think Berkeley's proven that we're an attractive destination for many types of businesses and folks. I'm confident that if council, future councils, other councils decided this was the way to go and we said, look, we're going to open up X amount of licenses, I imagine we would have folks for those. Again, I'm not a fortune teller, but I don't think not being involved now is going to hurt us necessarily in the long run. And from that standpoint, and just way too many questions for me personally, I will be voting for this today. Again, we can look at this anytime, we can revisit this anytime, we can make changes to this anytime, and if residents decide they want to, you know, join together and have an election to see if residents want it or not, that's fine as well. But again, ultimately, right now, there's just too much, too many question marks personally for me to be comfortable voting no right now and opting in until I know a lot more. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on oh fourteen eighteen?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R thirty-five eighteen, matter of designating the time and place of council, of city council meetings and its rules and order of procedure.
Is there a motion to approve R thirty-five eighteen?
Motion to approve.
Support. Approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annual item. We do it this time on the calendar each year. In front of you today is, would be a resolution outlining the items as mentioned by city clerk. This is rules, procedure. This does reflect the previous update that was made by city council at the March 5th regular meeting, which expanded upon the, the rules around filling the vacancies as they arise for city council. So this is the most up-to-date version, but as I said, we, the charter makes sure that the city council does review this annually and makes any changes they may want to see in the preceding year.
Okay. Discussion on thirty-five eighteen. Councilmember Henan?
Yes, one question I had about section eight, our paper of record, that we use the Tribune and I have proposed in the past that we use Woodward Talk, that, you know, it has a broader audience, but the clerk shared with me some reasons, but I, why that may not be a good choice and like to see if we'd elaborate that with the public, or if you could.
Sure. I will certainly default to the city clerk who gave a very eloquent answer on that today. She quickly brings up her, her email to read over the items.
So as Councilmember Henan had, had reached out to me to inquire about the, why we use the Daily Tribune versus the Woodward Talk, the Daily Tribune has an affiliate, which is Oakland Press, and we're able to advertise with either or and reach the Royal Oak area residents, along with residents of the, of Oakland County. As far as the posting, the Daily Tribune does allow us to advertise more days of the week versus Woodward Talk is only limited to one day of the week, I believe. As far as cost is concerned, we have had, the city does receive a great discount from Daily Tribune and they're very, they're, they're very flexible with us as far as make, as their deadlines versus the Woodward Talk does have a limit to their deadline.
Okay. You want to, thank you, Ms. Boucher, just quickly kind of recap those. You said the Tribune, we can advertise in most days of the week, Woodward Talk was only one, the Daily Tribune... The Daily Tribune covers, you know, Greater Royal Oak, and it's affiliated with the Oakland Press, which covers countywide, so we have the option to advertise with either or both. The Tribune is very lenient with their deadlines, whereas Woodward Talk is a little more strict with making sure that we have it in a certain time, and the Tribune is a more efficient vehicle to use from an economic standpoint. Councilmember Henon, is that, anything else?
Um, I had on Section 6, filling vacancies for boards and commissions. The process here is not the process that we've been using. Specifically, I wanted to propose that we, I think the process we actually have been using has been effective, and that we modify this so that item five would be, each council member shall notify the city manager of their preferred candidate, and then that would be the pool of candidates to select from.
This is for boards and commissions, Section 6, number five?
Yes.
The council shall vote to fill the vacancy or vacancies. So you want it to be that they send their preferred candidates to the manager?
Yes.
And then, that will only happen in which case when there are more than?
Right. Often, we only have one, and that's, you know, not an issue, so.
Okay. Any issues with that?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Just so I understand, is that an amending, you know, 5A, talking about, it kind of describes how somebody is nominated, or is it, 'cause, you know? So 5B talks about how we do a vote, one person at a time, and more recently, we've been talking about the full page of candidates, so I thought that's where you were going with it, but. Right. So to, to be precise, after four, we would insert a new five. Each council member shall notify the city manager of their preferred candidate. What is currently five would become number six, and six A would become, all persons identified as candidates by reason of paragraph five above shall be considered as nominated, and everything else remains.
Any additional questions or comments from council on just that point, before we move on to the rest of?
Yes.
The rules.
Um, okay. You are saying that the council should look at the list of candidates, and each one of us should notify Mr. Baumgartner of who our selection is for that particular board or commission?
Right.
So if none of us nominate somebody who's been nominated as our preference, that person is no longer a candidate?
Uh, yeah. That would help. One thing, you know, a few of the boards, we do have a large number of candidates, and this current process could be a little unwieldy, and that's.
That's been, that was a very unusual situation, having that many candidates as we've had recently, for anything. But the thing that I would be concerned about is, first of all, the first person that they go to is the chairman of that committee, and asks for their recommendation, and that chairman checks with that person and sees if they want to return to that position. And the chairman of the committee says yes, you know, yea or nay, doesn't want to come back. He does want to come back, and we welcome him back. But if none of us nominated him, then the chairman of that committee wouldn't have a say?
These are for vacancies. We're talking about vacancies, so if the person is gone, is leave.
Oh, he's already left.
Person is left, yeah, this is for a vacancy.
Okay.
Well, it, these rules date for appointment or reappointment, but the.
Yeah, it does say reappointment.
You know, one of the steps is, the city manager gathers all those names, including those reappointments, and would provide it to us. And for me personally, if the current person serving, you know, has been doing, you know, a fine job, that is, that is who I would nominate myself.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just trying to think kind of off the top of my head here, are there, would there be any, Mr. Attorney, any Open Meetings Act issues with?
Making a selection?
Making a selection, like, in that, in that manner?
Well, we're not making a selection. My, if I understood Mr. Henon's comments, he's talking about really a step in advance of making the selection, just simply when you have multiple parties seeking to be candidates for appointment, that, just to kind of winnow the list, the list down, each council member would submit their, I guess their one preferred, or depending how many people were appointing, and those are the, the ones that would be forwarded to, to council. I mean, I, I can see where that could help move the process along, but I think it's ultimately council's call, whether you want to see all of these, and have everybody come to a meeting, and everybody have the opportunity to speak. So it's, I guess, I guess the vote is between efficiency, or just, I guess, full, having a full, open forum for come one, come all.
And in these existing rules, we still get the full list, you know, the full list of everybody is forwarded to us before we make, you know, our own personal narrowing. And I purposely am suggesting that it goes to the city manager to avoid that OMA. It's not a discussion amongst ourselves, it is, you know, a one-way communication to him. Thank you. I was gonna just elaborate on that very point. The M and L and our legal scholars call that a constructive quorum, if someone were to, if any of us were to send an email to the rest of us, or a portion of us, expressing an opinion, or a, an indication of which way we're going. So that would certainly be frowned upon from an Open Meeting Act perspective. So if we were to put something like that in, I'm not exactly sure what problem we're trying to solve, but if we were to add a new five, and move the rest down and stuff, we'd need to be very careful with that, 'cause it's easy to hit a reply all by accident, and then inadvertently get ourselves into trouble, let alone intentionally.
Mr. Mayor, would the, inserting the term, the word individually, so each council member shall individually notify the city manager, would that work to, to ease the possibility of any OMA violations?
I guess before we worry about OMA violations, I'm also, I'm trying to figure out Councilmember Henon. So where, I mean, I'm sure practically, we've had this situation come up. I guess, in my experience, we haven't had too many. We, occasionally, it does happen. Without getting into specifics, is there, I mean, some kind of context to help me kind of visualize what we're trying to do?
Yeah. What problem am I trying to solve? That we are not following the rules as we have now.
These rules, you mean?
Yes. So it doesn't necessarily have to be proposed, you know, what I proposed. If these are going to be our rules, these should be the rules we follow. If we want to do a different practice, we should change these rules to reflect that.
Okay. So as far as the A, B, and C specifically?
Right. Point five, and so on, you know? Four and above, I have no issue with at all.
Is there a problem with just doubling down on the rules we have?
And I'm comfortable with that as well.
Okay. So just to help the folks that are here and have no idea what we're talking about, as we keep looking at four, five, and A, B, and C. Just very quickly, so we're talking about filling vacancies for boards and commissions, boards and commissions, vacancies. I guess I'll read them all. Section 6, one, recommendations will be requested from board or commission where the vacancy exists. Included will be a review of attendance records. Okay. Requests will be made in local news media, inviting interested local residents to make applications to the manager, so we post vacancies. All applications for appointment and/or reappointment will be forwarded to council for its review. We currently do that. If council member wants further information concerning the candidate, he or she may contact the applicant, we're doing that as well. At the next regular meeting, so now we're at section five, at the next regular meeting, or special meeting for that purpose, if called for that purpose, council shall vote to fill the vacancy or vacancies following the procedures outlined below. A, all persons identified as candidates by reasons of paragraphs one, two, or three above shall be considered as nominated. Voice votes shall be cast to fill one vacancy. Candidate, candidate receiving at least four voice votes shall be considered for appointment by yes or no vote. If more than one vacancy is to be filled, voting shall be repeated following six, paragraph five, until all vacancies are filled. So I see us hitting most of them, with the exception of, are you saying that all folks are not considered nominated, because we're typically getting a she would just?
We typically get our agenda with one name.
With a nomination on it. In which case, now I understand what we're talking about, and where we are. I don't have an issue with that, no. I think it may make it a little more efficient, because if we do go back to just having all of the names, and unwieldy process, whereas if we can whittle that down before, in a way that doesn't violate the Open Meetings Act, that, I think, is, is fine. I understand that. So question now becomes, where we go and put that back in here?
The planning commission is the only commission, and it is your decision, your, your nomination.
Right, no, we're, yeah, we're, right, that's mine. We're talking about everything else here. Okay. So yes, we can add that in. I don't have a problem with that, if anybody else, and now I think it makes sense where we're.
I'm fine either way, yeah.
All right. So we will add that in.
And I had one other thing, that's not in the rules, but reading the rules in the ethics session, section, you know, brought this to mind. Mr. Manager, do we have any citywide policy on the receipt of gifts?
I did receive your email earlier, and I hadn't had any chance to take a look at that yet. I, I would have to look at it further. I'm not sure if state law is the presiding statute over the amount, amount of gifts. I know the city, the state has passed two specific ethics laws. They, again, they may usurp any local policy.
Okay. So I was originally thinking of inserting it into here, and then that would start to get very unwieldy. Basically, I'm looking for, do we have a policy? If we don't, I think we should. And it, there may be a state policy that's controlling already, and then we're fine. So, and that's all the comments I had.
Other comments? On the other 12 sections? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. As part of the discussion that we had at the work session, actually quite extensively, that Councilmember Baker so ably led that portion of it, the, the mission and vision, and we had talked about trying to figure out ways to incorporate that more so into just general practice, and, and information that the city tries to, to get out. So whether that be something as simple as adding it to this, or something a little bit more elaborate, that we do something as simple as reading the mission and vision statement, and/or vision statement at the beginning of the meetings, you know, just to kind of let people know exactly what, what we stand for as a city, and what we claim that we stand for as a city. So that, that was just more of a thinking out loud kind of thing, and I'm certainly not broken up if it is, it's not taken up on.
Comments on that? Suggestion by Councilmember Gavin? Anybody weigh in?
I, I like the idea of incorporating the vision somehow. Just, I mean, even though we only look at this once a year, really, you know, starting to insert it in those places does leave places for reminders. I'm not exactly sure the best place to put it, but I like the concept.
Sort of where I'm at as well.
Maybe, if I may, Your Honor, have that as a, as a thing to think about, so when we could amend this. If and when we did such an amendment, I'd suggest that we not put the actual vision statement in here, but a reference to it, so that we don't have to change it 17 different places as it begins to propagate, but rather, you know, refer to the official city vision, and mission, and principles, and all that kind of awesome stuff, so that if and when that, that gets revised over time to reflect the emerging, you know, continued growth that our community has, then we just have one master place to, to refer to it.
Great. Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. The only other item that I want to call attention to is Section 7 in our Rules and Procedures, the filling of vacancies for city council members. As you all up here, some of you more than others, certainly recall, we have had to appoint council members a little bit more frequently over the past year than prior year, so we have included in this, to make part of our rules, the way that, the filling of a vacancy for a city council member, using the methods that we used the second time we appointed somebody this past year. So that is in here now, which leads, there is no question on how you're gonna do it, what it's gonna look like, what committees are involved, how it's, how, how folks are voted on. I mean, it's all spelled out, it's clear, it's transparent, and hopefully, if it does ever happen again, or when it happens again, there is a clear path for councils to follow. So I just wanted to bring that up as well. Okay. Anything else on this? I think we've done a fairly adequate job of beating our rules into the ground. But we gotta know them, so we can follow them. Good. Okay. Does anybody else want to comment on our rules here, before we move on? It's probably more difficult if you don't have them all in front of you. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-3518?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Terbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the next item on our agenda?
Motion number M-8318, matter of approving the 2019 city council regular meeting calendar.
Is there a motion to approve M-8318?
Motion to approve.
Support.
By Councilmember Dean, with support. Mayor Protem Baker. Following is our schedule for 2019 council meetings. One meeting in January, there is also one meeting in February. There'll be two in March, two in April, two in May, two in June, one in July, one in August, one in September, following our customer summer schedule. Two in October, one in November because of an election, and two in December. This is from our clerk. We will, this does not include the two budget work sessions that we will have in May. Months of July, August, and September have one meeting consistent with our previous summer schedules. January 21st and February 18th are holidays. City offices is closed, that is why we don't have a meeting on those days. And the first Monday in November is canceled due to a local election the following day. Any questions on our calendar, our meeting schedule? Councilmember Henon?
I just wanted to point out again that the August 12th meeting will probably overlap with the zoning board of appeals on that date, so if we can make sure this time we get that coordinated a little better for them.
For scheduling, where they are.
That's it. Thanks.
Anything else? Everybody good with the dates? It's been great, 2019.
Um, I, just a question about August 12th. Is that like the second Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Why isn't the first or third?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, that was moved to be the week prior to Dream Cruise and Cruise Fest, instead of the week after. Most of our staff is, is very busy on making sure that event continues to be successful, and so developing items for city councils review.
Difficult, difficult information.
Yeah. It's difficult to do both. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, it is customary that it is the first and third meeting. Every once in a while, we will adjust if necessary, and those are reflected here.
And I have another question. July 1st, instead of July 1st, why isn't it on the third Monday, instead of the first? Since, well, August is the second, but September is the third Monday.
Just, somewhere we typically do one meeting, and so we, we really just picked one or the other. I'm not sure if there's a specific conflict.
No, there is not.
There's no specific conflict.
My wife personally liked the idea of six weeks off for me, so.
If anybody prefers to move it, it does not really impact me. Does anybody feel strongly about moving it?
I don't, and I'm, I'm not looking at a calendar, but does it interfere at all with the Fourth of July week? And what day is the Fourth on?
It's a Thursday.
If Monday's the first, I'm guessing Thursday, yeah.
Thursday. Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, if people are out of town, I'd, with the, on a Thursday, it probably shouldn't interfere. People head up on the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Actually, I'd like the idea of having it so, before the holidays, we have a chance to again remind folks of the firework safety and things, 'cause it certainly tends to, to be in the heat of the moment, people get excited about. because it certainly tends to, to be in the heat of the moment, people get excited about stuff. So this is an opportunity to remind them of the importance and safety of proper handling and explosion of fireworks and all that stuff, so.
Okay, I just want to check because, because last year we accidentally got two dates wrong for this last month.
Any additional questions or comments? Pretty good? Okay. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-8318?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
and Turbrack?
Yes. Please read the next item on tonight's agenda.
Communications.
I believe Councilmember Dean is up?
Councilmember Gavin.
I was off one. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things. Planning Commission met. There was a discussion of the public participation plan. Continued discussion. There was a survey online for residents to offer comments on the plan itself. Discussion continued on ordinance on accessory structures and buildings, what to best be included in the definition of that. And further discussion and comment on the design review board as well. Next meeting is going to be next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, here in the chambers. ZBA granted a couple of variances related to signage, not on street frontage for an organization on Woodward and then also business on Twelve Mile. There's not going to be a December meeting. And then the Coolidge Avenue Committee met and discussed the work that Consumers is doing at Twelve and Coolidge and that the Holiday Lights Parade is going to be on December first. So I got to make sure that they're finished up with the work by then or have moved equipment out so that way it's not interfering with the parade and everything like that, so. The next meeting will be on the twenty-eighth at six-thirty at the Public Safety Building. Or I'm sorry. Nope, that's not right. That is actually going to be for the road diet, the town hall for the road diet. So that's what that was in there. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Okay, yeah. First, just briefly on the community center. I do also hope that we restart the effort soon to look at getting a community center into the city. The Environmental Committee, we had a guest speaker, Derek Schuler of our DPW. We discussed some of the stormwater issues facing the city and some brainstorming on green infrastructure ideas for the city. The Tree Board, they are reviewing a draft of the notice that will be left with people who ordered the trees with instructions on how to take care of the trees, as well as a new notice that we're developing. Right now, if someone's tree is marked for removal, they aren't notified and one day they may come home and their tree is missing. So we are trying to get ahead of that and, you know, leave them with information on, you know, the why, the who to call if you have questions and that sort of thing. And then both boards have expressed a strong interest in helping with the master plan. And we just want to make sure that we keep them involved and bring in their expertise as we develop that plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Dean?
Just a couple of quick things. I want to thank Patrick Jays for the fundraiser that they had for Parks and Rec on November eighth. It was really fun. Saw a lot of familiar faces and everybody seemed to have a good time. And then there's a very fun thing, very fun sounding thing happening via Parks and Rec, the superhero gymnastics party, Parents Night Out. That's going to be Friday, November thirtieth, from six to nine P.M. for kids ages four to ten. There will be pizza, a bouncer, a craft, and a movie. So there.
Can't wait. Mayor Protem?
I love that. That's awesome. Three quick updates from our, from a couple more committees. The Downtown Development Authority, DDA, their board met last Wednesday. Fun reminder that this Saturday is Small Business Saturday, the Saturday, November twenty-fourth. So please remember to shop Berkeley. I'm sure our chamber colleagues will have a similar message momentarily. Oh, it's good to reiterate, right? Ladies' night, Ladies' Art Night is next Monday, the twenty-sixth, with a focus on tin trees, which is always fun. It's an all-day event. And as mentioned earlier, the DDA is hosting an open house to talk about Coolidge safety and transforming Coolidge to be a safer street. We've heard some comments earlier about some of the hazards that our current design poses. It's a very timely comment. It's a very unfortunate situation that was mentioned. And this is a great opportunity to talk about the safety of Coolidge and how we can make it more safer pedestrians, folks in bicycles or in wheelchairs, pushing a stroller, or driving a car. So that's what this is all about. It's next week's Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. It is from six-thirty to eight-thirty across the street from this building on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. And if you haven't had a chance to be in there lately, we've done a little bit of upgrades with the infrastructure in that room as well. So it should be a pleasant place to have a very important conversation. So again, it's about the Coolidge safety discussion next week's Wednesday. Historical Committee met yesterday. They meet on Sunday afternoons. They're preparing for the Holiday Lights Parade, as was mentioned earlier, and they too are very eager for consumers to ensure that our event and everything surrounding that is safe, given that the museum will again have an open house on the night of the parade. You're all welcome to come in. If it's a little chilly, you can come in to warm up. And if it's not chilly, you can come in to enjoy, enjoy the scenes that much more. And then they're licensing a museum creation, a curation and inventory management platform, which is a great step forward. Most of the museums that really have their, I won't say they have their act together, they have a platform to, to inventory and make accessible the various items of interest to the city as part of their curation process and in the collection. So we're very excited to see that step forward. And again, the museum is open most Sundays from two to four and Wednesdays from ten to one. Third committee, the Technology Advisory Committee, the TAC group, met last week's Wednesday. One of the things, so it's a newer committee, and one of the things they're doing is having, rotating like a field trip and a house location visit so that the committee can better understand the technology needs for the given departments. And so last week, the tour was at the Public Safety Building. Kudos again to Lieutenant Miller for guiding them through the facility to provide them with some additional awareness of the technology needs that are going on there. And the committee will continue to rotate through the various municipal buildings. And the committee is looking at policies about social media and acceptable computer use for employees and all that kind of good stuff. So it's really good to see some additional work on those policies. And it was Margaret Cummings who once said, "Appreciation can change a day, even change a life. Your willingness to put it into words is all that is necessary." And so I know I speak for all of us, and I want to thank all of the volunteers that have done so much for the city. We had a conversation about adding additional volunteers into our committees. These all things are happening because of the volunteers that bring their creativity and talents to bear to help, help us have an even better Berkeley. So thanks to them and for all the employees that do what they can do and all the residents for their participation. Exceptional voter turnout a couple of weeks ago. So again, much to be thankful for here as we head into an opportunity to reflect and hopefully put into words the things that you two are thankful for. And I thank you.
Thank you. All right. All around. Councilmember Stedman?
Okay, I'm going to say as little as possible. The Community Engagement Committee is still engaging. They still would like to hear from residents. You can send an email to Jake Rosman here at the city and give him any ideas that you might have for how you would like to be contacted for events in the city. For the library, they did not meet last week. We're meeting again on Wednesday. But please check with the website to see what kind of activities are coming up. They will, they have activities for adults, for teens, for elementary school-aged children, for preschools, for parents and babies, anything that you can think of, they have. And also the Beautification Committee will be having, we did not, we also didn't have a quorum, so we did not meet last week. And, but they will be getting out information on nominating people for holiday decorations. And you can start doing that as soon as you see lights go up. And send them to, send them to the city manager, I think, and he'll forward them to Dan or Anella Meheesque. And I think that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm sure you're all aware that Thursday is Thanksgiving. We should all think about safety. More cooking fires occur on Thanksgiving Day than any other day of the year, according to State Farm data. More than a third start in a garage or patio. Why is that? Each year, fire departments respond to more than a thousand fires related to deep fryers. These blazes cause more than fifteen million dollars in property damage annually, not to mention serious burns. I don't know how many people are going to fry turkeys, but I got a couple of tips here I'm going to read. And if you're thinking about using a deep fryer, take note, please. Number one, stay away from the house. Set up the turkey fryer more than ten feet away from your home. Keep children and pets away. Never leave it unattended. Two, find flat ground. Oil must be even and steady at all times to ensure safety. Place the flyer on a flat, flat, level surface. Carefully gauge the amount of oil needed. Number three, use a thawed or dry turkey. Make sure your Thanksgiving turkey is completely thawed and dry. Extra water will cause oil to bubble furiously and spill over. If oil spills from the fryer under the burner, it can cause a fire. So that begs the question. Shut the fire off before you put the turkey in and then relight it afterwards. Matter of temperature, use caution when touching the turkey fryer. The lid and handle can become very hot and could cause burns. Also, be sure to keep track of the oil's temperature, as many fryers do not have their own thermostats. Be prepared. Have a fire extinguisher, multi-purpose dry powder ready at all times in the event of a fire. Also, have a lot of turkey because if the fire department comes, we're going to be hungry. Saturday after Thanksgiving is Small Business Saturday, as Mayor Protem said. There's a flyer over there. There is money available through a promotion from the county. So if you want to get involved, take a look at that flyer over there. And get involved. And the Holiday Lights Parade is Saturday, December first. Twelve Mile Road will be closed at five P.M. The parade will start at five-thirty. And then Twelve Mile will be reopened after the parade gets onto Coolidge and the traffic clears. So it'll be a while. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I have some good news out of our Department of Public Works. I want to congratulate Adam Wozniak on becoming an operator two. Adam's been with the city since 2011. Great guy, great worker, a real credit to our, to our team. So I know we often have public safety promotions in here, and so I want to make sure to recognize Adam for his fantastic work. So it's some, again, always, always a pleasure to send some good news along. I also want to thank, since we're talking about things that we're thankful for, I want to thank city council for giving up their last, their Friday last week and spending, you know, eight straight hours devoted to the operations of the city, whether it be, you know, we selected vision, everything from selecting a vision for 2019 to finding out how to keep people safe, thanks to Homeland Security. But it is, it's a pleasure to work with such an engaged council, one that are willing to give up their day jobs, to devote time, more or less unpaid, to the betterment of the community. So if we're doing things that we're thankful for, I wanted to make sure to include that as one of mine. And then just generally speaking, from the Baumgarten family, I want to wish everybody here and here and at home a very happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have anything today after post-election, decompress, debrief?
I just want to let the residents know that Oakland County Board of Campuses has already cleared City of Berkeley, so we are good to go. I also want to thank all of our precinct chairpeople for all their hard work, our election workers, our A.V. counting board, workers, our receiving board, our deputy clerk, Gina Cipriani, and last but not least, our voters for coming out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of state legislative matters that we continue to track and relate to home rule, or more correctly, the erosion of home rule. Senate Bill 637, which some of you may be familiar with from your recent programs through MML and so on. That is the proposed legislation that, if adopted, would would eliminate a lot of our ability at the local level to regulate the small cell and DAS facilities that are popping up in rights of way all across the state and all across the country. It's not a matter of being opposed to the technology. We all use it. We all embrace it. It's a question of maintaining control and regulation and more importantly, having the people who really should be doing it, those, those of us at the local level determining where and how these facilities should go in. My information is that it is expected that the lame duck session of the state legislature is, is expected to act on it one way or the other before the end of the year. So stay tuned for that. Similarly, there is, and I apologize, I forget the number, but there is another bit of proposed legislation that was kind of hot and then it got shelved pending the, pending the election and is again expected to be acted upon during the lame duck. And that is the proposed legislation that would deal with short-term rentals. And in its current form, would essentially preempt local regulation of short-term rentals of thirty days or less, which is most rentals. So basically, what that would render is the the inability to, to control the various Airbnb and similar rentals, which again, we, we, probably many of us have used that. But we also here at the local level have to weigh, weigh the effect of that against the rights and privileges of the permanent residents who are there and who see their parking being eaten up and who don't know who all these people are coming and going. So again, something we're monitoring and we may have answers before the end of the year.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. City Manager mentioned the work session that we had last Friday. Mentioned visioning and goals, but some of the other things that we spent a while talking about, OPEB and our pension funding. Sidewalk program. City Master Plan, DDA Master Plan, Comprehensive Master Plan, Stormwater Capacity Study, misdemeanors versus civil infractions. We spent some time talking about those as well as some executive orientation training for the incident command system. So it was a very packed day. I want to thank all the council members and staff for taking some time to do that. It was a grind. I also want to thank the residents, especially the nearly seventy-four percent or nearly seventy-five percent that came out to vote on Election Day. That's a tremendous number for the city of Berkeley. It's incredible that we had that much participation. Capital Improvement Millage, infrastructure passed. And as we've heard, the community center bond proposal recently failed. Want to thank, again, the residents for the infrastructure millage. And as it relates to the community center, I've heard a lot of folks talking recently of, you know, it was fifty to forty-nine. It was really close and, you know, if only seventy-five people had voted this way, it would have passed. That's true, but if seventy-five people voted the other way, it would have passed or would have failed by even more as well. So I don't, I don't typically want to see the city split down the middle on a community center anyway. Community center is much too important to our community moving forward to be in a fifty-fifty. It shouldn't even be close. It shouldn't even be in that arena. I mean, it should be, in my opinion, sixty, forty at the worst, seventy, thirty, eighty, twenty. It's hard for me to fathom that we are, you know, sitting right here on the, on the edge and what happened. So I don't have any math behind this assertion, other than what I've heard people tell me. But I haven't heard too many folks, even who didn't support this current iteration, that think our community center is a great place to live and work and play and to take their families. I don't see a lot of people, you know, family coming into town and the first thing you do is, let's go check out our community center. It's awesome. That doesn't happen. So if we know that's the case, and we've already heard at least from some folks today that our community center is still something that we want to pursue, I think it's important that we work at building a consensus, not just, you know, have two sides again of an issue. So there were folks that were very passionate and adamant on both sides of the issue. There were folks who sat in the middle. There were, there were at least two hundred folks who didn't even vote on the community center that voted on the infrastructure. So why is that? Was it just because it was a, I didn't care situation? And if that, that is the reason, then tell us what you would have cared about. So that if we do come back, we're not going to make the same mistakes again. I don't want to come back with another ballot amendment where the city gets divided and you got people hopping on both sides and people are fighting over Facebook or the newspaper, on TV, whatever the... newspaper, on TV, whatever the, that doesn't do any good for anybody. So if we're going to do this again, we're going to do it the right way, we're going to build consensus, we're going to get information out early, we're going to get accurate information out as soon as possible. We're going to make sure that we are engaging everybody in the conversation, and I'm not saying that we didn't do a lot of this last time, we did, but we're going to do it in a little different way this time, because I don't, and I'm sure many of you who are engaged and who care about the community, don't want to see us go through another six-month or three-month protracted battle where we're arguing all over the place, only to bite our fingernails on Election Day to see if it's going to pass or it's not going to pass. I would hope that we can build enough consensus beforehand, and we can take into account, what are the concerns, what are we looking for, what do we really need as a community, and what do we want as a community, so that we can make a plan that makes sense. Like, I don't expect it to be 100%, I know that's not the case, there's folks that are, we're not, we're not always going to agree 100%, but I feel like we should be able to build more than a simple 51 for 50%, in this case, majority, for something as important to our community as a community center is moving forward. And that's where I'll be trying to spend some time in helping that happen. Aside from that, happy Thanksgiving. There's a lot in Berkeley to be thankful for. There are so many things that we are very happy about, things that we're lucky to have in our community, our neighbors, and one thing that I really did like about that whole community center vote, it was really just the last day, it was just the folks that were out working the polls. On either side, we're talking, we're very respectful, we're communicating, it wasn't a hateful thing, oh, you stand over there with your no sign, I'm going to stand over here with my yes sign, and, you know, we're going to snicker at everybody as they walk past, and who talks to you and who talks to me? I didn't see that, saw folks out there huddling together, especially towards the end of the night to stay warm, but they were just talking, and they were talking very politely to the residents that walked past, hey, thank you for coming to vote, please consider X, Y, or Z, that's fine. That is what makes Berkeley great, because we didn't have that all the time, and a lot of communities don't have that, and we do. So now the important thing is to take those conversations and those relationships and move forward as we work to develop this new community center plan that's going to happen in the future. Happy Thanksgiving. See everybody at the Holiday Lights Parade, that's coming quickly, it's one of the best nights we have in the city, December 1st. Parade starts promptly at 5:30, be there, I have it on good authority that Santa will also be there, and if my kids are watching or they see this at some point, he has my phone number and I have his, so I can call him anytime I want, just so you're all aware. With that, I will ask for a motion adjourned. So moved. Support. The support. Councilmember Dean, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Turbran?
Yes. The November 19th, 2018, meeting of the City 37th Council has been adjourned.